We'll call the Board of County Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, May 20th to order. Beth, please call and roll.
Barry?
Here.
Steve?
Here.
Bo?
Here.
Chris?
Here.
We have a quorum. We'll proceed. If everybody please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item C, Consent Agenda. Are there any questions for the consent agenda, or what are the wishes?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Discussion? Discussion? Roll call.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Motion carried. Item D is Public Comment. This is the spot. If you're not on the agenda and you have something you'd wish to address the board about, you can feel free to come up. Anyone for public comment? That was easy. Okay, item E is Unfinished Business. Bethel Lutheran Nursing and Rehabilitation Center. The middle one, the mic is on, and the other one, you have to hold the button, but whichever one you want, if you just introduce yourselves for the record.
Yeah, good morning Commissioners. I am Keith Lovren, Director of Bethel Lutheran Foundation, and I'm joining Belinda Moeen, CEO and Administrator of Bethel Lutheran Nursing and Rehabilitation Center. Last December, we were here and we shared with you our vision for our new place to call home, capital campaign for the new Bethel Home Facility that we've been working on for the past number of years. And today, we're grateful that we get an opportunity to come back and share with you that vision and where we are at this point, and also invite the county to help us move this vital project forward.
I'm just going to go over some key facts about the importance of Bethel. We employ around 200 people within Bethel across many departments. We have administration, activities, we have chaplain, beautician, dietary laundry, housekeeping, maintenance, nursing, and social services. The first plans for our home for the aged were initiated by the First Lutheran Ladies Aid in January of 1944 at First Lutheran's annual meeting. Articles of incorporation were filed on July 16th, 1948, with the first bequest being made one year prior, June 5th, 1947, by Ole Gilseth of Wildrose. Bethel's first annual meeting was held March of 1949, where plans for the new building were approved. The total bid came in at $338,000. Ground was broken in May of that same year. June 4th, 1950, the cornerstone was laid, and on July 10th, 1951, the first residents entered the home. The building was dedicated on September 9th, 1951. Today, BLNRC not only offers skilled and basic care, but we also have partners. We partner with CHI for hospice. We have a partnership with Rehab Visions for Therapy Services such as speech, occupational therapy, physical therapy, and we also, with those therapies, we can offer some short-term rehab stay. We also offer respite care for families who need a little break from their loved ones. They can stay with us up to 13 days. We have recognized the needs of the community and add services as we are able to help meet those needs. We also partner with Williston State College in offering a Bethel Nursing Scholarship, as well as partnerships with Bismarck State for CMA classes, and the University of Mary in their nursing degree program. Bethel has been around for over 77 years and is a staple in the community, offering care for 74 of those years. Without it, the community will suffer. Our elders want to stay close to their homes where they grew up and raised their families. They will be forced to leave, seek care elsewhere, which in turn may cause their children, grandchildren, and extended families to follow them. In addition, our community will lose over 200 healthcare workers. The new facility, just some facts on that. We are looking at building a 90-skilled facility with 10 basic care beds. The current building that we are in is approaching 77 years, and this new building will continue to provide care for our aging population, not only in Williston, but in the surrounding areas of Williams County. The new facility will feature private bathrooms. They'll all have their own showers. We don't have any of that now. We have one shower in every neighborhood that they share. So now each one will have their own showers. We'll have ceiling lifts in the room. Instead of pushing a lift into the room, we'll put a lift in the ceiling and it can take them from their bed to the bathroom, to the shower, anyplace they need to go. Basic care will also be close by for convenience, yet provides privacy and separation. There will be a larger rehab area with their own courtyard for residents to enjoy while participating in therapy services. The building will obviously be new and have a more homelike look to it. A beautiful chapel off the main entrance will provide sanctuary and a place for residents and families to worship and gather. All these needs arise from a changing landscape of senior healthcare standards, updated building costs, the imperative ADA compliance, and the necessity for enhanced operational efficiency. A comprehensive facility condition assessment was done to determine if, in addition, remodel or construction of a new building was the best path forward to address those needs. After years of finding creative solutions to all the issues of our aging building, it was determined that building will, a new building will enable us to allocate fewer resources to maintenance and redirect our efforts toward enhancing services to our residents and community. This new facility will support our current employment number of 200 employees throughout the building. Our census is currently 83 skilled and five basic care. We are hoping to break ground in quarter four of this year. The project itself will take approximately two years to complete with a ribbon-cutting schedule Q4 of 2027 or Q1 of 2028.
Yeah, as Belinda's carefully outlined, Bethel Home, being in the community for nearly eight decades at this point, has always been responsive to the needs of the community of Williston and of Williams County, and even beyond Williams County. Whether it was the initial building that was built in the 40s and the first occupant in the 50s, to remodels and additions that happened in the 60s, and then later on in the late 90s, early 2000s, it was always a response to what the community needed. And now, in order to continue fulfilling the community's needs, we're looking to build a new facility because it's just not cost prohibitive to do a remodel and address efficiencies at the existing building. I'd like to walk you through some of these numbers because I think you'll see, from what she's told you and what you have in the books, we've got a realistic and carefully planned path forward for this new project. But bringing this vision to life is going to take a united commitment between private donors and the public as well. If you turn to page eight, it's titled "We Need You" at the top, and I can walk you through our funding plan that we've built to support this project. The project total is $72.4 million. Of that, the build cost is approximately $69.9 million. We broke that down into a different, some different funding sources that you'll see there on page eight. The biggest one being a bond of $30.5 million. After that, we've got Bethel Lutheran Foundation's contributions so far to the project is the land purchase and donation of $2.4 million, and an additional five that we've contributed to this project as well, or will have contributed once it gets underway. Bethel Home itself has internal resources of their own and an anticipated sale of the existing property on Second Avenue, which between the both of them is, we're hopeful for about $6.5 million on that. That leaves us with the capital campaign of approximately $28 million that we are, we're starting to raise right now. We've created a capital campaign committee. We've started meeting with some of our existing donors and are looking to reach new donors. And at this point, we've received about, between pledges and gifts in hand, approximately $1.4 million towards the project, so. This project has to be built on a foundation of shared investments. As you can see, Bethel Lutheran Foundation is significantly involved in it. Bethel Home themselves are. Our donors are involved, and we're looking for the public's help in this as well. And that's why we're here to continue to have this conversation and share this project with you County Commissioners, and see if you will join us in making this possible. We've got momentum being built, and in order to continue it, we would like to bring this in front of you and ask for your support in this project.
We are committed to continuing this legacy for decades to come, but we cannot do it alone. It is for all these reasons and many more that we are asking you to support us in this community effort with a $15 million investment. Together, we can ensure that Williams County remains a place where people of every generation are valued, cared for, and are at home.
Questions?
Does anybody have any questions?
Just one question. You said you're at one and a half million?
1.4.
1.4? That's a long way from 28 million. Are you looking for, do you have some large donors that you're looking at, and who would those be?
I can't say who they are, but we are in communication with some of our largest supporters at this time.
Okay.
Respectfully, I can't say who they are.
Of course. Yeah, no, that's fair.
It was a great question, but I understand. Any other questions? Well, we appreciate you bringing this and giving us the rundown and the numbers. Obviously, we're not in a position that we would just say we're going to open the checkbook and write a check. It's just, we can, we can review it, and I guess we'll just stay in touch.
And just to clarify, you're asking $15 million? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to item F, number one, auditor. Beth, you got something for us?
Yes, I have three things for you this morning. I received the contract from the state Commissioner's Office to administer our local sales use and gross taxes for the 2025 biennium, 25-27 biennium. I had Karen look this over. There are some things that need to be corrected in this document, and she's going to get ahold of them to correct the document. But I'd like approval to go ahead and sign it once the document is corrected. This is a normal thing that the state administers it for us and gives us the money.
It's normal, but they've sent it wrong all these years, or?
No, this is the first time because it's a renewal of our sales and use tax, and they have all the old stuff from when we first started it. And it was a resolution, not an ordinance, so we just need to have Karen contact them to send us the proper documentation.
Okay, any questions?
I'd move to approve that document once it's been amended and give authorization to Beth to sign.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Discussion? Roll call.
Steve?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Motion carried.
The next thing I have is a resolution from the North Dakota DOT, and this is awarding the bridge project to Gladon Construction, and we received the bid for $957,159.42.
Okay, any questions?
I just need authorization for the chairman to sign.
Make a motion to approve and have the chairman sign.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Motion carried. Is that it?
No, next I have an office update for you. It's my month. Of course, you know I'm Beth Ines, Williams County Auditor, and I've been in the office since 1988. I was elected in 1994. Part of my duties are Secretary to the Commissioners, Park Board, Planning and Zoning, and Board of Equilization. So doing minutes is a major part of my life these days. Also, right now, currently, we are handling an election. Normally, our elections are only on even-numbered years, but this year, we have agreements with the cities, and the city has a special election that we're handling, which is to indefinitely renew the sales tax for the Williston Park District. It's going very slowly at this point in time. We've only given out about 70 ballots. We've got about 35 of them back. The election is June 10th. It'll be at the meeting rooms in the ark. Only the city of Williston proper gets to vote on this, not the ETJ. We've had questions about that. Also, the state is starting a new central voter file platform that is based on shape files and stuff that we can send them, and it will help us with our city boundaries, and hopefully, we'll be able to add the school districts. Reason being, with the new legislation that has changed, we will have bonds and other caps and stuff that the school districts, as well as the county and the cities, will be able to vote on. Also, another thing that we do in the office that we're in the process of doing is the tax foreclosure, which is anybody that has any property that has delinquent taxes for three years. We send them letters and do notifications and stuff. We're working on a 2022 tax year. So far to date, we are working on 483 parcels that have not paid their taxes. They have until honor before October 1st to pay these taxes. If they do not pay these taxes, then the county applies them through a tax deed. Sorry about that. Through a tax deed. And then, we sell the property the third Tuesday in November, 10 o'clock upstairs in the meeting room. The owner, his wife, a child, or a parent has the right to redeem the property, so it doesn't go to the tax sale. And when they let it lapse like that in October, then they have to pay all three years of taxes. Currently, right now, they only have to pay one year of taxes. They'll have to pay a proration of 2025 taxes, penalty, interest, and fees. We have a lot of the same people on the list year after year. If history repeats itself, we'll probably be down to about 20 parcels for the sale, which is very nice because we don't like taking people's property for back taxes. It's not one of our favorite duties. We also take care of annexations. In the past year, from June 30th to June 30th, we have had two annexations, and both these annexations were from School District 7 to School District 6, the Eight Mile School District in Trenton. And we acquired those duties when the county superintendent of schools, the secretary and the county superintendent both retired. And so the duties were given out, and that was one of the ones that I was received, as well as the election stuff. We are doing a lot of marriage licenses in our office. We came up with a pre-application, so if somebody wants to get married, they can call in and ask for a pre-application. We'll send the application to them. That way, we can get all the paperwork done beforehand, before they get here. Due to the industry and the change of the diversity within our county, we have been using the Language Link, which is very, very beneficial. Some of the individuals that do come into the office do not speak any English at all, and so it's very helpful to have that. And during the COVID years, our judges decided not to perform marriages anymore. So now, we have people that go to the ministries and whatever online and get their licenses, and they can perform ceremonies. I can perform ceremonies. I don't do too many. And the people that are getting the marriage license have to find their own officiance, whether it's one of the ones from online or a clergy member, and they also have to provide their witnesses. Also, right now, we're going through the budgeting season with the townships. We've been compiling and getting all their budgets, which we forward on to Julie in the Finance Department, and she takes care of the levying and figuring out all that stuff for them. And we, once we get the financial reports, we send them to Washington DC to the Census Bureau, and we also get a list of their township officers that we keep current, so that if anybody wants it, it's online, or we have the list in our office. Our office also does a lot of abstracts. Normally, they're due like the last part of June, and those are like Game and Fish abstracts. That's the land that Game and Fish owns. They don't pay a property tax per se. Some of them pay in lieu taxes instead of a property tax. Soon, I'll be starting, I call them the utilities, but it's centrally assessed property. And the centrally assessed property are railroads, natural gas pipelines, oil pipelines, carbon dioxide pipelines, electric generation lines, and wind generation. These values and the money that it generates is the second portion of the taxable valuation of the county. The first portion is the property taxes, our property valuations, and the second is the centrally assessed part. The two of those together become the taxable valuation for the county and for each taxing entity. I didn't know if you guys knew that or not, but it's very important that we do that. There's a few changes in the valuation from what I put in and what the property taxes generate. There will be some changes coming down the pike for our office, as well as other offices in the county, due to legislative changes, as I mentioned. Voting on caps, cap increases, voting on bond issues. They can't be at a special election anymore. They either have to be at the primary or the general election, and they can't be in odd-numbered years anymore, which will be nice. Any questions? Thank you.
On page one, the second, no, I'm sorry. Nice job. Thank you, Beth. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
That brings us up to Adolescent Care.
Good morning. You guys should have gotten a copy of the entire policy manual for the Adolescent Care Center. Karen painstakingly went through every single page, every single line with me. I appreciate her help on that tremendously. So I just need to get them approved, so I can get them submitted for certification, for shelter care certification.
I just wanted you to know for casual reading, I read through that last night and wondered if Karen had read it as well. Thank you.
Yep, she helped me line by line. Probably the first time that policy manual's actually been line by line, so it's good to have it done.
Well, thank you guys for doing that. What are the wishes?
I would move to approve the Policy and Procedures Manual for the Adolescent Care Facility.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Discussion? Roll call.
Bo?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes, motion carried.
Any other questions while I'm over here?
I was afraid we were going to be quizzed on it this morning, so I thought I better read through that.
Things going well, then?
Yeah, numbers are starting to pick back up. We've been pretty consistent. Kids in and out, and a lot of kids coming from McKenzie County. They did get our rates increased through the legislation, as well as now our Chin's kids will be reimbursable for that first day where they were not prior, so.
How about staffing? How are you sitting?
I am two staff short.
Oddly enough, that sounds about normal.
Yeah.
Could I stop by on Friday morning, perhaps, for a visit? Would that be okay?
You could, but I won't be there.
Okay, it's a good time to be there, then.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
All right, did I miss any department heads? No, Dennis, nothing. Sheriff, got nothing. Okay, well then, let's move on to Helen.
Good morning. I have a couple of things in your packet. On the position report, I have one position to add. State's Attorney, or excuse me, we have State's Attorney's Office, Victim Witness Administrative Assistant, and then we will add Sheriff's Office Administrative Assistant as well. So we'd like permission to fill both of those, State's Attorney and Sheriff's Office.
I'd move for that approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Discussion? Roll call, please.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, on the back page, under Internal Appointments, we have two, we have a delegate and an alternate that serves on the Coordinated Regional Interoperability Board. It relates to 911 Dispatch. We have the, currently, they have terms that run from 7/1/25 to 6/30 of 2030 that we need to appoint for. Currently, Liberty Dancer, who is the IT professional at the PSAP, serves as our delegate, and the sheriff has been serving as the alternate. We'd like for your new appointments to be Liberty as the delegate, and Michelle Romans, the director, as the alternate, please.
That does make a lot of sense. I think we had, we were down a director when we appointed it last time.
Correct.
So it kind of back to where it needs to be. No offense, Sheriff, I'm sure you've got plenty to do. Okay, what are the wishes?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Motion carried.
We do have a lease agreement with the North Dakota Highway Patrol for the space that they use at the law enforcement center, and we apply. We don't make money, but we do have a calculation of determining how much it costs for us to run a building, and then we have the standard per square foot cost that we charge the state agencies or the city that rents from us. And so this is just a renewal through June of 26th. Seek your approval for the chairman to sign that.
What are the wishes?
Move to approve and have the chairman sign.
Is there a second?
Hold on a second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Right, we created several years ago a township loan program that allows for the township in essence to borrow some cash from us so that they can do a smaller road-related project without having to go through the full financing process. We are paid back through the special assessments that are paid by the local property owners. And so Williston Township has created an application. The policy, the plan document, as we have set up this program, is that the Finance Department does the work with the township, makes the review to make sure it qualifies, and then gives it on to this board with a recommendation for denial or approval. The Finance Department does recommend approval of this, and so I'd seek your permission for that, okay? And to have the chairman sign the document.
Okay, are there any questions?
Just a comment, Mr. Chairman. For the record, I collected the signatures. I live on this street, and I don't know if it's a conflict if I vote. Karen, I just want to make sure that's on the record. Do I have to ask permission to abstain? Okay.
Okay. Yeah, you just, you just did. She gave you permission, I guess. I, I was gonna ask the same question because it seems to me we had to do that one time too, or you had to ask, but anyhow. Um, is there, uh, can we get a motion on this?
I'd move to approve this, uh, this loan.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Discussion? Hearing none? Roll call.
Does that include the chairman to sign?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Abstain.
Motion carried.
We're glad to see this program being used, and like, like anything that we invent, every time we, we have an application, we find a couple of things that we think we can do better. And so I think you'll see coming forward at some point, uh, just a few tweaks to how we have the program language written because we want to make sure we're, we're, we're making it relatively easy for the townships to, to make use of the program. All right, and then on behalf of, uh, the Community Engagement Coordinator, who just can't be here today, we do have the twenty-twenty-five Tourism Grant Program Award Recommendations. I believe that Commissioner Ramberg Barry serves on this committee, and so details about the specifics, um, could be maybe addressed to him, although I got a briefing on it. And then there are two, excuse me, sample agreements. And so with your approval, this is what will be used. Once you guys approve the awards, the Community Engagement Coordinator will contact each of these organizations, use the template. This is here for your approval. But then we would like permission for the signatures to happen once the templates have been filled in. And of course, she and Karen work together on these documents. Any question?
Were there, uh, were there more, uh, applicants? I mean, obviously, we, I'm sure there's more money asked for, but were there more applicants in this, or are we pretty much helping who replied?
Yes.
That's good news. Okay, any questions? Comments? What are the wishes?
I would move to approve and have chairman sign.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second, uh, discussion? Discussion? I guess I'd just like to point out it's eighty thousand dollars that we're, uh, putting back into the community to try to, uh, do some, uh, some more things with, uh, with tourism.
And these dollars, of course, are raised from the sales, or the lodging and hospitality tax, yep. So this is how the Sentry Code is written. They come in and then they're used for tourism-related purposes.
Roll call, Beth.
Bo?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes, motion carried.
That's all I have.
Perfect. Commissioners, have anything? No, we are adjourned eight-thirty-four. Think we'll...